Go ahead and call the meeting in Grand Falls City Council to order. Okay, any agenda additions from staff?
Uh, no additions from you.
Okay, no additions from staff. Anybody from council have any agenda additions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on consent agenda. We can go ahead and approve the consent agenda as written. Or if somebody likes something pulled from it, thank you. Okay, and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, um. We might as well drop down and take this substation thing, I think. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we got Jade's here and Tim is here. Welcome. And, uh.
And I'll, I'll actually start here, if that's okay. Just a little bit of a recap. Wanted to invite both Jade and Tim here to help you answer any questions and participate in the discussion. Couple of handouts here. One is this one. So, I wanted to print it because these are the bids that were received. As a reminder, we went to bid for two transformers, one for each substation and one switchgear for the Busch Park substation. Um, we actually got quite a few bids. Um, I was pleasantly surprised for the transformer, we received five bids. And the lowest came in from Virginia Transformer. And in honesty, that's the one we were hoping that was going to come in the lowest. That's the one that has a great reputation right now for providing quality transformers. So we were excited to see that one was the lowest one. Um, for the switchgear, we received three. The lowest is from Power Supply. Um, in terms of how the bids came out, Power Supply came in lower. Unfortunately, the transformer came in more. Um, with that, kind of how we're looking here on the financial side of it. So, if you take in the bids that were received and taking into account construction, because that's the piece we have not bid out yet. And the reason that's a delayed portion is because the equipment is sixty-two weeks, right, out-ish?
Yeah, till sixty or seventy.
Okay, so we're looking, so we're looking at not bidding that construction portion until in 2026. But, um, Tim is working to get a firmer cost estimate, working with local contractors. Um, so depending on how we move forward with financing and what that path looks like, um, we could move forward because again, if we issue a bond, we do have our water main project match tied with a bond that we need to do yet. And then the fire truck that we purchased, we also are needing to reimburse ourselves for those costs. So depending on how we move forward with, um, financing, I'm comfortable as long as we have some firmer cost estimates for the construction as well as having some contingency funding just in case. Um, I'm comfortable moving forward issuing, issuing that bond when appropriate. So kind of what does that financial picture look like? And of course, I want to just disclose, I mean, council can go about this any way you guys want in terms of financing. Kind of what I'm running through is just merely a suggestion. Um, but I'm, we, we can do that path, we can deviate it in any way that council feels makes more sense. Just purely for discussion purposes. So, you take the pro- total project cost, including the construction part of it, and this is the estimated amount for the construction. We're looking at four million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred forty-four. Now note, this does not include the engineering, uh, for HDR, the four hundred and seventy thousand. As council recalls, we did use some internal reserve to cover the engineering costs for this project. So, if you minus out the two point three five three million that we had in federal funding, plus the two hundred and fifty thousand in state grant, and I would also recommend still that one million from reserve funding. Uh, we have close to five million in reserves and I've been working closely with Tim Miller with MRES. As council's aware, we started a rate study and then we paused it, kind of pending this project to redo an analysis. And I have visited with him and I'll get to more of what that analysis is in a minute. Um, but he's also comfortable as well as staff's comfortable continuing to utilize a million dollars out of reserve for this project. So if you take that all into account, bonding wise would be roughly eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred forty-four. Um, recommend adding at least a hundred thousand dollars of contingency. If contingency funding isn't used and we bond for it, we can always reutilize that back to paying the bond payment. So just note that. So one, and there's multiple parts for tonight. So one piece is for council to, and I want to share the whole picture before council does any discussion here. So one part of this though is moving forward, accepting the, and entering into contracts for the lowest transformer, uh, bid and the switchgear. So that's one piece. Next piece, as council may recall, that we also talked about and the memo is enclosed and there's another handout, this one, that also lists a number of additional improvements that, um, both HDR, uh, the electrical department and myself and even Compass, to give them credit. Um, feel that if we're spending the dollars to upgrade the substation, these are additional improvements that are also needed with the two aged substations. And the goal of this again is to ensure both of them last for forty-plus more years, um, and, and do it now. So, that estimated cost for those alternates that are handed out is eight hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three. Um, and again, I did enclose the memo that was shared back in March as a refresher. Um, so one option tonight too, in addition to approving the transformer and switchgear bid, is at this point, staff feels comfortable and wants to make the recommendation to also approve and move forward bidding out the additional improvements to see where those bids come in. But one with the estimated cost for that, the estimated cost for the construction, the actual cost for the transformer and switchgear, that comes to, and, and utilizing the revenue that I went over, comes to one million, eight hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven. Now, as a total, and including the alternates, we do want some additional contingency. So what is recommended between staff with HDR's agreement as well, would be to bond for two million dollars as a worst-case scenario. Now, if we bond for that, I've again asked MRES doing a rate study, what does that look like impact-wise on our rates? Okay, the recommend, and there is a financial handout. I don't have a copy of it, but there's an additional, oh, here we are. This packet is a copy of his financial analysis. So what that would look like as a recommendation would be a three percent rate increase in twenty-six and a three percent increase in twenty-seven. And if you look on the very last page, that's, it shows our rates and what that actual impact would look like and what the rates would look like. But here's some good news. There's a third piece of, of this project to consider. So as a little bit of background and a refresher, council may recall a year ago that when we applied and were awarded the federal funding, I approached the state asking for funds to match the federal grant. And the reason why is they had multiple millions of dollars set aside to match what was referred to as the IIJA funding grant. And as council recalls, I, we applied for that like six times as well as twelve other Compass members and none of us got it. Well, here we are a year later and they realize, nobody got it. So I was told from the Department of Commerce, they have about a hundred million dollars sitting aside. So I reached out to the Department of Commerce and as well as I worked through Senator Dame's office. I was working with Wendy, his staff aide and, and Mr. Dame's and, um, I said, you know, we have a project that would be perfect for those matching funds. It's federal dollars, it's matching federal dollars, and it's for a project that qualified for IIJA. Well, the state has decided to allow an application process to match other federal funds. That application comes out at the end of October. I've already submitted the pre-information to the state requesting that they consider our federal funding. Like that, because they were, they were asking for a form to fill out, like what federal grant you receive, what project, what, um, in this case, resiliency upgrading aged infrastructure, what bucket you, you, you fit in. And they consider based on that form whether they should allow you to apply in the application process or not. And that was all submitted. And they have said informally, um, to Kevin with the RDC to also give him credit because he's also been working with the Department of Commerce, they said we could apply. Now, we can't apply for the transformer and switchgear costs because we have already, are at the process of awarding bids. But we can apply for the construction cost, which is estimated to be over nine hundred thousand. And the max you can apply for that grant is a million dollars. I would like to move forward and apply for that grant for the million dollars to match the federal grant. So that would be the third. So again, looking for, if council's comfortable, we can discuss everything or take time to, um, looking for approval of the lowest bid for the transformer and switchgear and enter into contract. Uh, looking for approval to bid out the additional, um, um, substation improvement items. And, and note, that cost does include engineering equipment and construction as well, that estimated cost for the additional improvements. And then the third is authorizing me to work with the RDC to submit the grant for the construction portion.
That's just state?
That's just state. That's not a federal grant. Again, that's state funding that they set aside to match federal funds.
Yep.
And if we get that, then potentially instead of bonding two million, we can bond one million. Or instead of pulling a million out of reserve, we save that. I mean, there's a lot of different routes we can go here. Um, after my review, I feel this is, makes the most sense to move forward with this plan. But again, it's truly up to council, whatever you would like to do. I'm happy to provide any more information on, and any other ideas.
Okay, that was a lot to take in, a short.
There's a lot of moving pieces.
If you have any questions, now's the time to ask, um, and things. Um, do appreciate all the time you put in, into this and the contacts, crystal and things. And, uh, that you have to get us where we are here and it's been, uh, great. I think there are some good opportunities out there yet. One question, I mean, I just, I don't know if anybody else has it or whatever, but just, you know, if we got five million in reserves, why would we only touch one million? And why wouldn't we go for more?
We could. Um, you know, we do want to be careful for a few reasons. One is, we've had a history, I would say in recent years where, um, those reserve funds have come in handy. Think of the hydro plant prod, project and the shortages we have there. So you want enough funding in reserve to cover those things that come up for unexpected projects as you move into the future. Or, um, all some of that funding, of course, um, is built up to help pay for capital expenses. Um, the electrical department is working on upgrading a lot of aged infrastructure as well. So I want to be careful in utilizing those funds. Um, if I recall, next year, we're actually running into a negative because of capital equipment that we're possibly looking at upgrading. So you have to be careful of those flow changes when it comes to that fund. Um, and then you think of even disasters, storm events, catastrophic situations. You always want to make sure you have enough in reserve there. Uh, when you bond for funding, when we go do our big bond here, for example, we're going to have a bond rating portion. And the more you have in reserve, the higher chance that you have a better rating with your bond as well. Because they want to see that funding in place for those emergency-type situations or unanticipated projects. I would think a great example is the transformer project in general. If council recalls, a couple of years ago, we weren't having this conversation, we weren't aware of it. And it was actually Pompous who brought it to our attention of, hey, you know, your transformers are fifty years old. You guys may need to start considering getting those replaced. And we just happened to meet that right timing of getting some of these federal funding dollars after thinking out of the box. Because again, we got a EDA federal grant versus the IIJA funding. So it's trying to have funding in place for all those various situations, but it is up to council. Council could certainly utilize more. Um, but those are maybe things I would toss out there to think about as well.
Thank you. And that's what I was looking for, was just the explanation from, you know, your side, staff's side on why we wouldn't do more.
Well, and the other thing I'd point out is look how many times in the last ten years I've been here that something came up and we pulled it from the electrical fund. Baseball lights.
Yep.
It's been funded by the electrical fund.
Yep.
Just things to.
Thank you for that.
Yes, no problem. And it's whatever council wants to do, but.
Yep. All right, do anybody else have any questions? Concerns? Anybody care to make a motion that we move forward on the, accepting the low bid on the transformers?
You, you can accept the lowest bid for both pieces of the equipment and enter into contracts in one, if you would like. It's.
Okay, that would be on the transformers and the switchgear equipment.
So I'll move to accept the bids, the lowest bids for the transformers and the switchgear?
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, now what we have out there in front of us is, uh, looking for a motion to accept the bid for the additional.
Call for bids.
Call for bids, for the additional equipment. If somebody would care to.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to call for bids for the additional equipment signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now we looking for a motion to apply for the state grant?
Yes, and, and I, to add a bit more to that, um, what I'm looking for is, um, if council's comfortable allowing me to work with the RDC, there is going to be a cost for them to help put that grant together. But this is a very fast-paced moving grant. It's awarded on a rolling basis. So as soon as that day one opens to fill that grant out, I want her name in there. Um, so if council's okay, uh, allowing me to enter into an agreement with the RDC to write that grant, usually it's five to nine thousand. It kind of depends on, probably for this grant, it's going to be closer to ten because we are asking for a million dollars. Um, and it depends what the grant process is. Sometimes we get lucky and it's like a one-page or easy to do. And sometimes it's a forty-page, high-level engineering document grant. We just don't know what this is going to look like or how much time. And I certainly will keep council informed as I move forward. Um, but I am asking for, if council's comfortable, a little flexibility to get this grant in, more so because of the timeliness of it.
Okay, very good. And, uh, just a little past history. I mean, we've had, uh, great results in applying for grants and that five to ten thousand dollars is usually always well-spent. And, uh, we're all about grants.
We can get another million dollars for this project. I would be for spending.
Yep, so.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and, uh, apply for the grant.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Excellent.
And I would maybe say too, you know, just kind of think about all of this. Um, obviously, we're not going to take any action until we know, um, probably the results of that grant, right? And, um, you know, we're bidding out the additional improvements, but it doesn't mean council necessarily has to approve them once we get the bids in. Granted, there'll be engineering work that will be done, um, but it's fully up to council. So we still have time to kind of figure out the financial side, which is also why I wanted to have this conversation, at least starting now.
So how long has it taken us to build up to the five million? I want to know because.
Actually?
We go from five down to three, we just pay for it out of our pocket? Is it going to take ten years to get back five million or is it a shorter timeline than that?
So, to, 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 to answer your question, I mean, it took some time. So if you look on page two of this financial document, it shows you the historical back from twenty twenty-one. So I mean, in twenty twenty-one, um, you know, we had close to four million. So it took from twenty-one, um, well, this isn't fully, to twenty, to twenty-five. Because of course, he's doing estimated out after twenty-six, so ignore that. So it took us roughly from twenty-one to twenty-five to get roughly where we're at. Yeah, twenty-one to, to twenty-five.
To gain though.
To gain.
About one hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yes. And I mean, that's always tricky too, because, you know, you never know what projects are going to come up or when we're utilizing that fund for something unexpected or capital projects or upgrading.
About one twenty-five in the bank each year, the way it looks, you know.
Just something to think about, you know, it's like, I'd rather not have any debt, but. I don't want to empty the savings account.
The short answer takes a little while. I, I would say, I've been here for ten years and I think when I started, we had around two, I think. So it's taken, it's taken some time, but, um.
Yep.
But yeah, I mean, you can't predict the future either. So I mean, it's, it, I, I don't think it's a bad discussion to consider utilizing more reserve. I think it's fully up to council. The, the option I presented, I think is more of a safer proof, but it doesn't mean it's not a bad idea either. It's, it's really up to what council's.
We'll get time to think about it and if that grant will make a big difference too, so.
Yeah, because then we'd be bonding one million instead of two, or we don't utilize internal and we do two. It's, it's, there's different ways.
Is there cheaper interest rates if we go a million versus even say five hundred thousand? Or not necessarily?
That's a, that's a great question. I don't know that. I would, I would.
Eller should probably tell you.
I, yeah, I want to check.
You know, at some point, once you know some true numbers or whatever, you know probably what we're looking at.
Yeah, the only thing I had Eller's poll was a fifteen-year versus a twenty-year bond for the two million. And it was more to our advantage to do the fifteen. It didn't lower, I would say, you're just paying more in interest. It didn't make it worth it to do the twenty-year. Um, part of that, I think, is because, you know, we're bonding equipment, so that's viewed a little maybe different than like a street project.
I can't say fifteen, eighteen, twenty years ago or whatever I'm doing, I said here. I mean, the auditors at different time always kept talking, at that time, we needed to build our reserves more and stuff like that. And that's, you know, the direction we've been working in the past and we've gotten, we've gotten there and we've done a good job at it. But, uh, you know.
And, you know, to give ourselves credit, I would say, you know, even for a project this size, getting two point three million in federal funding, two hundred and fifty thousand from the state, and if we can get another million from the state, I think.
That's huge.
Pretty good.
Mm-hmm, that's huge.
All things considered.
Well, well, we'll just do what we can and.
Trying.
Hope for the best and see what happens.
Grant for five thousand, I'll apply for it. I'm trying.
So, okay. Anything else on the, uh, substation, uh, talk?
And I would maybe just add, Tim, Jade, anything else you want to add to or that kind of sum it up?
All good?
Okay.
I, I, just as an observer who's worked in a lot of municipalities, you guys, there's certain spoils. There are way worse off communities. Then what, then they're having discussions about emergency replacements and things like this. It's a lot of forward things. I'm just very impressed.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that and yeah. We've gotten here with, with some effort and some direction, but yeah, thank you.
It's a, it's a beacon for a lot of communities.
Appreciate them words. Well, thank you both for being here tonight and, uh, we'll continue talking and working and as we go forward here and we'll get there.
Tim, I'll touch base with you tomorrow and next steps for those contracts.
You betcha. You betcha. Uh, it'll be really easy with the switchgear. They're going to take our contract as written.
Perfect. I will share with. I, I will share with council that Virginia did chop up our contract a bit and it's tricky. Um, because they know they're the best out there. Um, and they have done that with other municipalities, not offering as great of contracts out there, but kind of left it, you either sign or go somewhere else and good luck. Um, because the next bid was quite higher. Um, I did give the contract to Spencer. He's reviewing it. And we're going to try to push back on some of it and make it the best contract we can, but.
Okay.
They're all going to be a little more challenging.
It's all fun.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back up to the top here to five, A Utility Commission.
That is just information, no council action. Um, we don't always get the minutes in advance and we did this time, so I, I did include the, the minutes there from Tom.
Okay, how about the Kilwatt Community Center?
Same, just information, um, no council action items.
Gosh, I did, Steve, and I was reading through their minutes at, uh, their, um, let's see, what was it here? Oh yeah, their active contracts were up. Seventy-eight contracts over last year at this time. That's big.
Over that twenty-four.
That's big. That's really good. Yep. Okay. Um, down here at six A then, we got this li- library story walk over at Rice Park.
So, council might remember, um, I don't recall, I think it was last year, we approved the same thing for Memorial Park along the trail there. Along the trail there. These are little smaller signs. They look like kind of realtor signs, is how Larissa explained it to me. Just advertising different, different books, kids' books. Uh, they actually got a grant, um, to put this together and it's encouraging young kids to read. And they're just asking this year from, uh, October eighth to the twenty-second to display them along the sidewalk.
That's something they put in and they remove again? Is that the deal there?
We, we don't have any involvement with it, just outside giving permission.
So it's a temporary thing?
It's a temporary, yep, from the eighth to the twenty-second is what they're looking at.
Okay. Yeah, I certainly don't see any issue with it myself.
I've approved it in the past and I didn't get any complaints, but up to council.
Yeah, it's up to council and if, uh, anybody so desires, we could use a motion to approve that or.
So moves.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the library walk, uh, use over at Rice Park signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, uh, now on resolutions, we got, um, six B two, airport hangar surveillance agreement, severance agreement, excuse me.
Well, this is tied with, uh, Ryan Christopherson, council will recall. He, um, is building his hangar out there for his egg, playing his egg business. And he has a loan, um, to construct a hangar with Citizens Bank. And Citizens reached out to me and because he does not own the land, because we have the agreement in place for, for the land, what they're wanting to do is a severance agreement. So in the event between another agreement between Citizens and Ryan, there's a fault in that agreement, the bank can come in and actually physically remove the structure, essentially use the building to sell it to pay back the loan if it's defaulted on. So I did have Spencer review this. Um, he was fine with it, um, but that's what they're looking to do. I'll be honest, I haven't seen this request ever with another hangar. Um, but that was what Citizens asked. That came out of, I read the clear city office.
I would say I didn't know anything about it.
All it's giving is giving, we're signing to say we give permission for the bank to come in and remove the structure. And they have an agreement with. come in and remove the structure, and they have an agreement with him that they would only remove the structure in the event of a default of the loan.
Actually, remove the structure or turn around and sell it to somebody else?
Sell it and have them haul it out, but basically allows them to sever the building from the land. That's why it's called a severance agreement.
It's really, I mean, we're just leasing the land.
That is correct. We don't.
He owns the building itself.
That is correct.
Yeah, it's just sitting on leased land, so we are really out nothing. We're just giving the finance department the okay to come and retrieve their good if needed.
That's exactly correct.
I think it'd be worth more sitting with that. It's like a mobile home.
Having time to come and move it, yeah.
That's what they wanted.
Yeah, well.
I mean, that would be worst-case scenario. I think they tried to sell it as is versus trying to move it, but if worst-case scenario came, they had to move it, they got a seller that wanted it someplace else, they want that opportunity to sell.
I think the bank's looking out for their interest, obviously, to recoup if there's a default.
Why wouldn't they?
I think the last thing they do is want to move it, but.
Yeah.
Is there anything about like them making hole, if they do any damage to the existing land, that they repair it?
That is not in there.
Okay.
Yeah, like.
Like if they're bringing tarmac in and whatever else, I'm like.
Tearing up everything around there. Do you think that?
And we could, and if there's preference, we can add that. Nothing says council has to approve this tonight either.
I'd say we got to look out for our own good, you know, our own, well, being there too, you know, and I mean, I don't see.
If they were to remove the building and tear up the grass or the tarmac, that it gets.
Disturb the current ground or something.
That it'd be repaired back to original.
Yeah.
Condition.
Yeah.
Can't imagine moving a building like that would be.
Like I said, a 10.
Oh, just lift it up.
You know, there's others who have financed hangers. I've never seen this agreement, but for, I don't know what kind of loan he took out or the amount, it was just something they felt more comfortable with doing.
Yeah. I would think adding a little bit of our own language in there wouldn't be asking too much.
No.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's no site restoration in here. I'm happy to add that. That's a great.
Yeah, yeah, good thoughts. Good thoughts. So what do you need there?
Maybe, I don't think I need an official vote on anything. Maybe just if council by consensus is okay favoring this, I will work with Spencer and we will offer some counter language on site restoration.
Sure.
I think that's fair.
Thank you, okay. All right, then we're going to drop down to number three, this custodial contract, and.
Yes, so this is a yearly item and budgeted. However, there is a proposed change to this contract. It was asked by Ron Fagan, in particular, if the city would be open during the summer months, May through September, to instead of having the rival departure building cleaned once a week, to clean it at least twice a week, because we have run into some issues of it not being stocked or needing to be cleaned, and Lois or city staff have taken care of it. That would be an additional cost of 500 to also add that into the contract.
A year.
For the whole year, yeah.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I'm, I'll be honest, I'm grateful that she's willing to continue the contract because she does a good job, and I think once they do elect to stop doing it, we are going to run into some challenges.
Well. Yeah, and I don't know, she's been around for all 15 years.
Yeah.
You know, I think, and stuff, and does a very good job, and haven't heard any complaints or anything, I guess. Any issues? Anybody care to, any other discussion, or anybody care to make a resolution on this custodial contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended changes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, does this, this runs on a May through September deal?
Yeah.
Actually, it's actually out of contract now then.
No, it goes till the end of October, I think.
Oh.
Yeah, end of October, yep.
Yeah.
That's what the letter says. The May through September is.
Oh, that's.
Additional trips.
Oh, okay, okay.
The rival departure building, sorry.
All right. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Designate polling places.
So this is required from the state, whether we have an election or not. It's designating the polling places to be City Hall and the KCC, so it'd be a resolution approving.
This is just kind of housekeeping stuff we got to do each time, right? Okay. Dan made a motion and resolution. Is there a second? And a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Number five, the new fencing for the cemetery.
Yes, and also some updates with the cemetery. So, as a reminder with this, so we are looking to replace the fence that is in the capital items budget this year, and this would not only be for the existing area, but also for the new additional area, and I did enclose a map to show where that is, so currently this.
It looks good up there. They've been moving dirt.
Yep, so Public Works has been doing the road out there, and it's this yellow portion on the map. This is the new area. So budgeted, we had putting in that road, and we just used recycled finds from the skating rink, and it's been Public Works who have been putting in.
Almost all gone. Did it all go up there and now some other people were taking stuff away?
Yeah, there was a couple of different piles, so what they could use, they were using it on this road, and then what they couldn't use, they kind of did a first come, first served, we advertised it.
Yeah, there's just a little payloader bucket left the other day I saw, so.
And then, so the fence would be for the current area and that expanded area, and then here's kind of a photo, kind of roughly the type of fence that would look like that was in the packet. And got two quotes. The lowest is for Michael's Fence and Supply for 44,840, which between the road and the fence, we are quite under what we had budgeted, so.
Maybe this is in the thing, but are they going to redo those, the brick?
Pillars.
Pillars? Are they just going to?
That's a good question. I think it was just for the black part of the fencing, but maybe that, that's not a, that's not a bad point. Maybe.
Pillars weren't in this.
They weren't in it, but maybe.
If they're reusable, great, but if they're leaning or whatever else.
I, I think it's a great, that's a great point, because I think it's a great opportunity to look at them, because if we're under budget and they need any work or tuck-pointing work or anything, I think it's worth maybe looking at that. Let me ask John and follow up with council on that. It's a good point.
Okay. Any other discussion on the fence?
Will this be done, I can't. So if. Yeah, so the road's being done right now, and then just note too, we did successfully get a permit as well from XL. They have a transmission line there, so we did submit a permit and worked with them. At first they told us no, but to give John credit, bless his heart, he was very persistent with them and said, no, you need to come out here physically and look, and finally then all this isn't a big deal.
Was it above ground lines or in the?
It's above ground, yeah, but at first they told us no because some of these grave plots and then the road was going to be part of in there right away, and John's like, it's okay, like you have plenty of room and just physically come out and look at it, and they did, and we got that approved.
The other three fourths of the cemetery is.
It's the same thing. It's literally following the same suit, but you know, we wanted to do the right process, because if they do go out and they see it for whatever reason and we didn't apply for a permit, that's when they knock it nice, and they say, okay, well now the city's going to pay to dig up bodies and relocate bodies is what it would entail. So we did it the right way despite how difficult it was, but we did get there in the end. To answer your question, the fence, the plan would be to still hopefully do it yet this fall. Worst case this spring, but the last conversation I got word is they were going to get it done yet this fall.
This is a replacement fence?
It's a replacement for the existing front area and then new, and then partial new.
Yeah.
For the whole. And it would just be along the front.
Any other discussion? Anybody interested in approving the low bid?
Also move it, we do.
Okay. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. Information, Rice Park restroom.
Yeah, I wanted to share an update on this and just make sure council's comfortable with us moving forward. So of course, we've had a lot of discussion on the Rice Park restroom. I did submit an application with the Granite Falls Area Community Foundation for an additional $40,000 towards the project, and that was at the recommendation of some of the board members to submit. With that, the street committee has had a lot of conversations about this, and we feel, given how we've been unsuccessful in bidding this project out as a whole and finding a general contractor, what the committee would like to do instead is to have us, meaning John and Mike being the general manager for, or the primary overseer of the project, and depending, since we're doing it in pieces, it would be quotes, not bids, but to try to get at least two quotes and complete the project in separate pieces and align it all together. So they would go out for quotes for everything.
Yeah.
And then we would have a meeting with everybody involved and coordinate, and that way we're not paying a markup fee. We would save there, and hopefully by doing it this way, we can get some people to bid. I mean, the other option is to go out for whole bids again. I mean, we can do that. It's whatever council ultimately prefers, but we kind of feel at this point, maybe we would have more success trying this way.
And we've had local contractors advise us to do that.
Yes.
Then they would be interested.
They would feel more comfortable.
But as far as working through a large general contractor that trying to general it for the size of it, it's just not there and things, so. Yeah.
Markup.
There's way too much markup that got thrown into it the two, three times that we threw, bid it out, and so.
I think.
I'm busy with. Yeah.
I don't happen to have anybody that really, now we have new parts of it, so we get the part we need and can move on to our next one. And I think.
There's just to be brickwork, plumbing, electrical. John and the crew are working with the Baker Brothers on the water line, sewer line component of it. That's happening now.
Yeah.
No, I think that's.
Yep. Anyways, yeah, I guess all the discussion and.
Council doesn't need to vote on anything either to just.
Just a heads up on the direction I'm looking to go. I think it's the only way that we're going to really get it built. Honestly, I mean, you know, the little bathroom over there, it's what, 12 by 16 roughly?
I think so.
I think?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
$240,000 to build a bathroom? Can't do it. I mean, it's crazy.
Shockingly, it's been like the hardest project.
Yeah.
Done is build a restroom.
So, this way here, hopefully, you know.
This will work.
We'll try it anyway.
We'll see what happens going this way. The local contractors asked for it to be done this way, said they'd have interest in it, so we're going to find out how much interest is out there.
Try again.
That's right, we're just giving those trailer bathrooms out there and just leaving.
I get it, you too. I mean, my goodness.
It's crazy.
People there asking, what's the most complicated project you're working on, a restroom?
Yeah. Anyways, after that's at.
Yeah, just everyone's okay with that? I'll take that consensus. Okay?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Anything else to come before council tonight?
Close to Jared.
There we go, thank you.